All right, we'll call to the Borough Council Workshop and Regular Meeting for August twenty, twenty twenty five. We'll start with our roll calls.
President Smithen.
Here.
Vice President Gerard. Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember White. Mayor Gerard. Borough Manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Harper.
Here.
All right, if we all stand, we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the by of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty of justice or law.
Councilman Burns will do our invocation tonight. Councilman Burns.
Thank you. Almighty God, we come before you in humility and purpose as we undertake the work of this council. Grant us wisdom on our deliberations, clarity in our judgment, and unity in our efforts. May our decisions reflect justice, compassion, and a sincere commitment to the common good. Bless this community we serve and guide us in all we do to uphold the trust placed in us. Amen.
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 All right, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and start with our agenda. Item number one, approval of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the August twenty, twenty twenty five workshop and regular meeting?
Motion.
Motion from Councilman Burns, second from Councilwoman Cresser. Are there any changes, amendments, or, I'm sorry, Weiss? Actually, I was thinking that when I said, man, maybe it'll slide, maybe no one will notice, so. Are there any questions, changes, or amendments? If there are none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item two, approval of the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July sixteenth, twenty twenty five workshop and regular meeting?
Second.
I got motion from Councilwoman Weiss, second from Councilwoman Fagan. Any questions, changes, or amendments? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. All right, item three, public input. If there's anyone from the public. It doesn't look like there is anyone, so we'll just go ahead and skip item three and go on to item four, the announcements.
Strategic planning meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September tenth at six P M. The next Borough Council meeting is September seventeenth, workshop regular meeting at seven P M. in Council chambers. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, August twenty fifth at six P M. in Council chambers. And that Planning Commission meeting will be canceled due to lack of business. Hurrock is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, August twenty seventh at eight A M. in Council chambers. The borough offices will be closed on Monday, September first in observance of the Labor Day holiday. Movie in the Park is scheduled for Thursday, August twenty first, which is tomorrow, at seven thirty P M. in Centennial Park. I believe it's Sonic Three. The Hatfield Two Fifty Committee will be hosting a plaque dedication in memory of Revolutionary War Officer Lieutenant Colonel Jacob Reed on Saturday, September sixth at ten A M. At thirty-two twenty-six Penn Street in Hatfield Township. And our Fall Festival and Car Show is scheduled for Saturday, September thirteenth, three P M. East Lincoln Avenue.
All right, any questions for the manager?
I'm just asking whether you need me at the strategic planning meeting, but we don't.
Okay.
Okay, just.
Not that I can think of.
Okay, great.
All right, we'll go on to item five, reports from our standing committees and the mayor. We'll start with budget, finance, and labor. We have not met, so there's nothing to report out on. Planning, building, and zoning?
We have.
Okay. Public safety?
Okay, we met a couple of weeks back. And we talked about, there was a request for a block party. On the avenue, but our insurance does not cover it, so we cannot have block parties. Also, there was from February twenty-sixth to May tenth. The speeds were trapped right here on Main Street. And most of the average speeds were coming into town was twenty-five point one miles per hour. And going out was thirty, twenty-six point oh seven miles per hour. So there is a few here and there that are speeding. There isn't any speeding going on as of right now. Now, it's out of, there's three hundred and thirty-three, hundred and fourteen. Yeah, three, three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three people coming in and out of the borough. So there was a lot being trapped, but it's, there is names being known on. Also, it was brought up that there's a resident that would like to have the railroad crossings be quiet zones. Where they will blow the whistle when they're going through it. Yeah. It's not safe for us to have that, and it also is really expensive to do that. But she'd be more than welcome to come in and talk to us and address us with her issues with it. She did want to talk to us about it, so we would take that into consideration as well.
Are there any, like, regulations for the railroad itself on that? They might not be allowed to not do that.
Yeah, so it's actually up to the municipality, the authority to establish a quiet zone. They would still, in like emergencies, like have to blow their whistle, different things. There are certain, like, lengths of railroad where if there is crossings within that, it might not meet the standards. So after talking to the railroad and public safety, there was just, I think the railroad's more concerned with, like, safety. Everybody was just more worried with safety. People drive into trains when the gates are down, and if you don't, and we don't have gates at West Vine. So we would have to be responsible to install those, and I think it was like over a hundred thousand dollars.
It's not cheap.
Yeah, and if we did that, that's just the gates, then we would have to have pedestrian crossings as well, like we do in South Main, and then we'd have to look at the other crossings up to upgrade those.
And we'd have to maintain those too.
Yeah.
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 So, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing is that the regulations would require, if we made it a safe zone, that we'd have to put up the gates. Okay, you can have one or the other. Is that kind of a summary or quick way to think about it?
Yeah, yes. If we made it a quiet zone, we would be required to put in gates.
Okay.
How it is now, that it's no quiet zone, it's not required at this time.
Okay. Interesting, okay.
And then we also talked about the pedestrian crossing on here. Hopefully, that should be sometime next summer that we will install that. And also, the, with the bike form blackless, the fix-it stations are going to be done in a couple of weeks or so.
Do we have those mapped out, so that's?
Not yet.
Okay, okay. And once we do that, we'll put that out on social media. Okay. Okay. Has there been, and it's probably a good question for the lieutenant, the, one of the things I see oftentimes in the summer, I see like kids around moms on bikes in the street. Holding up trucks. Have we seen a decrease of that recently, or is there anything that we're doing?
I would say there's been a decrease overall compared to what we've had in years past.
Okay.
It's still going to be an issue, and it's always kind of the same. We're trying to catch them and act. This is part of the problem. Obviously, general safety, it's up to parents to try to be a parent and educate their children on proper safeties. But it's only an accident we have because they want to play chicken with, with a four thousand, five thousand pound vehicle, then can't stop in a dime, and they want to go head and land. It's only a matter of time before that person's distracted by a pedestrian, and next thing you know, they're.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the officers, when they see it, they do make those stops to identify individuals. But Orog said it's a lot less compared to your task.
Okay.
It's much more problematic. They allow it to as time as a school year.
Okay.
Probably pick that up again, and all our officers will be out there, of course.
Okay. Yeah, one of the things, I don't know if it's something we would want to consider, is it seems as if there's a lot of kids on bikes who don't understand the rules for riding bikes. Like they're in the other lane of traffic and crossing over in front of people. I don't know if there's something we can do to help educate kids and parents to do, to understand that bikers have to conform to the same rules as drivers in a car, so.
There's a lot of free resources available on my, too, if, something that you guys can share that from Pat Dottis.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Let me think about that. If we put something in a newsletter.
Yeah, so there was just something shared by Chief, what was it, like, three weeks ago about the children, and I suggested putting something out there, educating parents, and he said they get a lot more from their social media feed. So we went with that, but we can put that in, possibly a newsletter wouldn't come out until like the spring next year. But it's really just, it's gonna be the parents taking the time to educate the kids, and even if they do, I don't know that the kids will listen, but we can certainly, we're best, we've just been running into the issues with the bike kids doing wheelies down the street. I do know that Montgomery County, I don't know if you saw, the Commissioners of Montgomery County, they put out like a statement or things, but I think it was like with scooters and electric, electric scooters, electric bikes, those type of things, how they work, and, you know, we can certainly, I saw, I think it was posted the other day, I might have saw, we can share that on ours as well. Because I know a lot of people have electric bikes in town, and they're. Run in and out too.
Yeah.
Do both, regular bikes, electric bikes, and do that. But I, I know that the post that the chief put up the other day was like, wow. Yeah, and I got tons of likes. It's just kids riding down the middle of the street, wheeling with cars behind them.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, like, I was surprised. I used to get to see it all the time.
Yeah, I wonder if there's any, if there's any TikTok videos or any Instagram posts that maybe we could post as well too, that might help educate, because to your point, that's what kids pay attention to, right?
Yeah, that's what he said. I said about putting something, he's like, actually, social media, he was right. I mean, you guys had, I forget how many views on it, but it was like hundreds of views just on that one post, kids riding down Main Street here in front of the old funeral home, wheeling with a person who was videotaping. Yeah, it was on the community page, yeah. Yeah, but maybe there's something that we can do.
Yeah, and maybe we can blast it out. Okay, yeah, maybe we can blast it out to anyone who's connected to the borough as well, to a lot on social media, anyone's got email.
Yeah.
You know, connections in, that'll help spread the word, so. Okay. All right. All right, how about Public Works, property equipment?
That is not met.
Okay. Councilman Gerard's not here, but the utilities committee hasn't met either, so.
They, yeah.
Or did they?
No.
Okay.
They did not meet, but he would like to spread aloud the statement in the packet.
Okay.
So I could read it.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Hot and humid July had air conditioners running full time. July twenty twenty-five saw a continued string of above normal temperatures combined with high humidity. Hatfield customers consumed a large amount of electricity during the month in an attempt to stay cool. For the month of July, electricity usage was two point five million kilowatts. July power demand was twenty-one percent more than June and fifty percent higher than May. And just adding on, if you remember, when he read it last month, we were at twenty-five percent higher than we've ever been, you know, in like the last, you know, decades or something, and so this is on top of that, twenty-one more percent higher. You could tell in our electric bills, when we're paying, you know, over two hundred thousand, which is probably going to become the normal now with the capacity, but we're just using a lot of electric. People are running their air conditioners. So when people come in and say they have higher bills, the billing department is sharing this statement from hand with them.
Anything from Hurrock? He's not here?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Mayor, she's not here, so. All right.
Down short, not swimming.
It's all, yeah, yeah. Fifty percent of the time, there aren't crooks, so it's, you know.
They do beautiful calendars, as we all know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. For anyone listening, it's just a jealousy thing, because they're retired and get to do this.
Right, exactly.
All right, we'll go on to item six, reports and correspondence. We'll start with the monthly investment.
Monthly, cash accounts reported monthly investment was included in your packets, highlighting the last page, a gain of, you know, fifty thousand nine forty-two, you know, the income was forty-five, the disbursements, you know, five thousand of that went to our, a little over five thousand went to our Harleysville bank account that we have, which gets the dispersed, disbursements from Key Bank, so that continues to grow. Diane and I did have a conversation this week, because the one you'll see next month, that just came in this week, electric continues to bring in eight grand a month, and we're losing a thousand on the other three accounts. So we've asked how we can similarly mirror those, the electric account. Electric seems to be doing great. Yes, there's some money in bonds and things like that, but so is Electric Sewer, or Sewer Managed has similar funds, so we just kind of want to look into that a little bit more and tighten some things up, maybe move some things around, not change it drastically, we can only invest in certain things, but just maybe mirror Electric a little bit more, because it seems to be so successful. They've kind of let it ride, and I think we were just, we want to put a hard stop to it and kind of do something a little bit different.
So we'll have a review of that prior to, or next be Budget, Labor, and Finance meeting?
Yeah, well, that'll be on the agenda, and we'll have something to talk about in strategic planning, just like how we can look at those investments moving forward, because that would be part of the strategic plan for the budget section in a sense of, you know, do you feel like it? Do you still want to keep it here, get your money in the Harleysville account, which is like a good rainy day? What is the interest here versus putting it on, playing it? You'll play it, it's just in your account, you make interest on it, you're not getting the disbursements to Harleysville, that's kind of like a rainy day, so there's plus and minuses for both. So it'll be on for both, budget, finance, and labor, and we'll talk about strategic planning, just so we can kind of see where we want to go in the future.
No. Any questions? All right, how about the monthly E I T L S T?
Monthly E I T, after July, we were at three twenty-three, three eighty-one for twenty twenty-five, versus twenty twenty-four, we were at two ninety-six, five twenty-four. We're only halfway through August, so we have a little bit to make up. If you go down to the bottom, right now, we're about three fifty-nine, year-to-date, versus three eighty-nine in twenty twenty-four, but again, we have, you know, ten more, more days till the end of the month, so we'll see what that brings in. L S T, year-to.
Hold on a second. August was a huge month last year in the year's, sir.
Right, yeah, so that's why.
Yeah, so we might get one.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know why it's a big month. Maybe this is what people make payments.
Yeah, and I know that, thinking about, yeah, I guess, there's just different quarters that, yeah, quarterly it seems to be good, like May seems to be good for us, then we skip down a little bit, and then it comes back. So same with L S T, we're doing year-to-date, or end of July, we're at twenty-seven, four eighty-four, versus in twenty twenty-four, we were at thirty-three thousand three seventy. If we're going year-to-date. Uh, we were, we're at thirty-three thousand five twenty-nine, versus forty-eight thousand six seventy-seven, and again, we got roughly fifteen thousand last August, and we're only at six now, so, you know, we'll, you know, maybe we can double that and, you know, get something, so. We'll see what it looks like next month. I do know it's been a topic, we had our first in-house, like, staff budget meeting today to talk about it, and we have talked about increasing the E I T and the taxes, just because we had it at five hundred. Last year, we got around five forty-seven, we've been consistently around five twenty-five, five thirty. So that has been a topic of discussion that I'm sure will come up during the budget season, when we get into talking about revenues versus expenses.
Hard to believe we'll be starting budget season again next month. It seems like we just finished. All right, any questions? All right, monthly year-to-date?
Monthly year-to-date through June's in your packets. You can see revenue, revenues were up over a million, versus expenses were down in June. Also, in July, we only had a five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar bill list. We are getting reimbursements back from the grants, and that keeps, you know, so it looks like we're getting a ton of revenue in. Most of it is coming in and going out the door. You'll see it on this bill list again this month. So I always want to see revenues higher than expenses. I just think it's a little, I hate to use the word askew, but I don't think it's relevant as much as it has been in the past because of this project that's going on. We're getting a lot of grant reimbursements and putting a lot of money out the door that we normally wouldn't in a budget year. So I think this year might be a little outlier when we're doing graphs and kind of looking where we're trending in like the five-year roadmap. This one, we kind of have to remember, we did, you know, almost a three million dollar project that we've never done before, so I think it's going to, like, askew the numbers a little bit. We'll just have to keep a note of that.
No. All right, any questions? Monthly zoning hearing board approvals, applications, excuse me?
There were no new applications that came in this.
All right. Uh, Montgomery County Planning Commission Steering Committee report?
There was no official report in your packets, but we did have a walk audit this week that some members joined. We walked around town with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, along with their design team, just to kind of see, get a better feel, better than looking at it on a map or a piece of paper, so they're going to take back, took a bunch of pictures, they're going to take things back to the Planning Commission, kind of come up with some talking points, and we'll resume meeting in September. So we didn't meet in July or August for the summer. So in September, they're going to take what they saw out there, kind of bring some suggestions and ideas. We'll talk about it at the committee, and then eventually we'll move it to council to talk about.
All right, any questions? Now, we'll go to our Police Department report?
Nothing further than that, just the report.
All right, any questions? How about Fire Department?
We're on our pace, still towards five hundred and more, so. And our new squad is currently getting off the, but then now, obviously, so. We have that in service.
What, as a percentage, what is that increase over what it usually is for past, last year?
Um, we're first thinking about it consistently, because I had each one.
Okay, okay. Any questions? All right, EMS?
EMS report is in your packets, nine municipal response calls in July out of the one thousand forty-eight calls that B M S C responded to. Sick person falls and chest pain were all twenty-five percent, so. So a little bit different than we've been seeing from our past reports, though. Still very minimal calls in the borough.
All right, any questions? All right, Public Works?
The only thing additional highlight on here is just the slight power outage we had on July ninth to July tenth, with a car coming off the road, running over a pad mount transformer. Little minor disturbance, but took a little time, but everything got back online.
Any questions? I have kind of a question for Public Works and is, is about the pond. So it seems as if the pond is holding its water this year. Which is a good thing, right? Did we ever find any other cause for why it didn't have water last year? Because I know one of the concerns was that it was being drained out with all the new construction and, well, that's what, that was one of the things too, but, you know, so it seems as if, is it fair to conclude that we think it's just more that last year was more of a drought than this year?
I would say, right? It's also a very wet year that we've had this year as well.
Yeah.
So I think kind of a mix between the two.
Okay.
One between, you know, two opposite sides of the spectrum.
Okay. Well, that helps the future planning, right? So, because I know we had some conversations about that, what we wanted to do, so. Okay.
In the budget for next year, there is a part where it's researching, so I will just say I'm not, I believe that we have to do a lot more research before we make a statement that we can just grow a fountain up there, and it's going to be working, and it's going to be sustainable. So we have to televise the pipe that is supposed to be next to and or feeding the pond to see if it does it, if it can hold water, be sustainable, not just have like a wet year. So there is a line item in the budget this year for pond research and design, which would be kind of taking this, all the gathering information to the next level, because at the end of the day, we have to have possibly some engineered plans, we have to do some more research, if we want it to be sustainable for a long term, long time, and not just year to year. Because, yeah, just putting a fountain out there, I don't think it's going to solve the problem, because we didn't fix anything. It just rained a lot this year.
And we say the budget, we're talking about for twenty-six, right?
Correct.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't remember anything in twenty-five, so.
It's been, it's going to be like a big topic during strategic planning. Like, I know, like, it's just, what do you want the future to look like in the newsletter? Actually, it's a whole section on, maybe the second to last page, it's like, we want to hear from you. Please watch our town hall meeting in May. Here were your three options with very summary of what we talked about, because you can't put it all in the newsletter. Please email admin at Hatfieldborough dot com. Do you have one, two, or three? Do you have another idea, another option? We haven't made any decisions about the pond, we're in the investigation stage, so I'm really hoping that drums up some response that we can take, maybe not by strategic planning, because the newsletter will be out like a week before then, two weeks before then, but, so we can have an educated conversation, because I think we're going to have to budget some money next year to do something, unless you just want to roll the dice and hope it rains a lot.
Yeah, I. Can I ask you a question about that? Who owns the pond? Us?
We do.
They dedicated it to us when it was built.
Yeah.
Okay, does the H O A have any responsibilities with regards to the pond?
No.
No, they have opinions, I know, but.
We did see, did have a brief discussion a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of the points we talked about, was reaching out to the H O A to see if they would consider any kind of like partnership with, you know, anything that comes out of it. So I'm, I'm planning on reaching out to them just to see if they're, if they have any interest.
If they're interested in, because it, it really does affect that neighborhood a lot, and it might be something they might be interested in or willing to help us with.
Yeah, and also doing some outreach in that neighborhood, I'm interested in doing, just going door to door, just to talk to people if they're not going to come forward, just to see what they do, especially the people that live directly around there.
And what is that thinking?
Yeah, I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks to get out there and start talking.
Okay. And that was part of the original agreement, right? When we, when they built the, the townhomes or the condos there? That we would manage the park and the pond and all of that, so that.
Get it open space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the, I've heard both mixed reviews from residents from out there. Some like it, some don't like it. More people have said they liked it than they don't like it.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm really hoping that Jimmy goes out, that's awesome. We just, that's why we put it in the newsletter this time, because it's only been five to ten people that have stepped up and really said, and like, we're going to have to talk about putting some, doing something, putting some side, it could be significant financials into the pond, if you want it to possibly be sustainable for another hundred years, you know, you, yeah. It, we, I don't know that we can do it without them, so I tried to, we want to hear from you, that's what it says, like, your opinion matters, you know, so hopefully it drums up some people, I think door to door will extremely help a lot.
All right.
Is the H O A. Reeves, is he? Okay, I was thinking, I know somebody else who lives there too.
Who's the H O A?
Be a banker. I'll try to get you her name, because she would be very good person to talk to.
Yeah, and Reeves Miller's the H O A.
Okay, talk to him.
Don't we see him enough already? Oh, sorry, my mic was on. Hot mic, hot mic. All right, thank you for that update. Engineering?
Cash reports included in your packets, but everything that's in there, we're going to talk about in detail throughout the meeting, so we're just going to pass on this report to them.
All right. Zoning officer?
There was no report included in your packet.
Bar marshal?
No report in your packet.
Pool advisor?
No report in your packet, though I do know the pool is coming to an end. I think after Labor Day weekend, then it will be splash, dog splash, splash, dog loser, something.
Yeah.
Dogs go swimming, and then the pool, yeah, then the pool's closed for the year.
Do we know how the attendance has been this year?
Um, I don't personally know, except from dropping my child off, there like been lines crazy out the, and they'd have to use the like side entrance. I don't know if that happened with Catherine work there, and you had to use the side entrance, because they couldn't go in the front, so it seems like a lot of people.
It's actually good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was very cold at the beginning of the season, so I think that kind of, you know, hopefully they picked up.
Yeah, this year, for whatever reason, we just didn't go to the pool. So usually in past years, we're there every week, and this year, we just, we have, we've literally gone like once or twice, so.
Well, in, in the beginning of the summer, it rained every weekend.
Yeah.
Like June, July, then June, June, the mid to July, rained every weekend, so.
All right. If there are no questions, we'll go on to item seven, managers' report?
Just want to highlight some land use and development updates. The Bennettsport Land Development, they're working through some final like punch list items for ramps and drainage, so they should probably be looking for an escrow release sometime over the next couple of months, since we only released one escrow for them. For Forty-three Roosevelt.
Sorry, so the, and are they fully occupied?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. Yes, that's great. Some of them are even rentals.
Yeah, not surprising.
Yep.
Everybody wants to rent. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
They're on the rental inspections.
There you go.
Uh, Forty-three Roosevelt Land Development, he's currently. Uh, forty three Roosevelt Land Development, uh, he's currently working through the permit process. He did record his plans. He's looking to start some site work. I think next week he wrote Steve's work, been working with him for like electric and things, so. You should start to see some movement over there. I did pass their information uh along to the firehouse in case. He does have to demo the house out there and he said he'd be willing for the firehouse to come in and do training. He was fine with that, so I. Hooked um that developer up with the firehouse. They want to do some training. So we should see some movement on that side of town.
I think they're gonna get more done before the winter. Are they gonna just work through the winter to get it done or?
He was gonna build it in phases, so he has like. One, two, three, four. I think he was gonna build three and four and the house sat on one and two. So I think they're trying to get three and four up and done. Uh, if he can work through the winter, he will. And then um work on one and two. For uh twenty three North Main Street, uh, if you've been down Main Street, you've probably seen uh the house is gone and there's a lot of movement that's going on on the property, so. His plans have been recorded. He got a grading permit which was issued a few weeks ago. He's working through the process of getting building permits. What uh he did his utility work in Main Street before we started the project. What he would, his goal would be to get the foundation work completed through, he said, October. And then have everything under roof before December. That's his goal. I think it depends on when he works through his permit process, how long that takes. He has some items he has to clean up a little bit on those according to Bob. And then um just probably how the fall is, how cold the winter is.
But he did, he posted his money.
Yep.
His construction escrows were all posted, so you know, we're in good shape. We recorded the agreements.
Did he get all of his utilities in?
Uh, the West Broad Street, East Broad Street, um, utility replacement, uh, North Main Utility Replacement Project. Um, it's on for a discussion item this evening, so we'll be talking about some final payments and change order requests. The MTF grant is on for discussion this evening as we are gonna consider to award the bids for the project. Uh, the Broadway Resourcing Project, Steve can give an update on that, where, where we are.
Yeah, then as far as the borough, the pretty much the million is complete. They're scheduled to start paving uh mid to late next week.
The Monaco twenty forty grant bike improvements, uh, council member Weiss kind of touched on that. We did sign the agreement. We'll be working with partnership in the township kind of over the winter. Maybe have some maps, get some opinions of where we like some bike stations and those things, I think. Be good to put out for people to, where they walk or they bike, you know, those type of things. And then an item of interest, North Penn Water Authority saved the date sixtieth anniversary, September eighteenth, three P M to seven P M. So uh that was in your packets if you're interested in attending.
If we're attending, do we have to see former councilman Farrow there too? Cause that might be a disincentive.
Probably gonna be there.
And if you're listening, so.
Day, so I don't know.
Far away.
Right.
Something lower bucks or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Easy drive. Go at three o'clock.
You have to let me know if Diane gets some blowback because of that statement, so. Okay. Uh, any questions on the manager's report? All right, having done, we'll go on to uh item eight, our new business discussion items. We'll start with the change order request number two for the utility replacement project. You want to just do two and three together?
Yeah, I can do, do them both. So change, uh, the change order number two is to add line items for performing additional work. Due to the existing pipe being encased in concrete, excavation of rock, conflicts with existing utilities. And additional modifications to the sidewalk ramps. This change order also includes a credit to the borough for performing survey stakeout of the sidewalk ramps. Uh, the change order is to increase the project cost by sixty nine thousand fifty dollars and ninety cents. For a new total contract cost of three million two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred forty six dollars and thirty five cents. Moving to change order request number three. It's to reconcile the final contract cost based on measured quantities installed in the field, which will actually decrease. The overall project cost by two hundred seventy one thousand four hundred ninety one dollars and thirty three cents. For a new contract cost of two million nine hundred seventy nine thousand fifty five dollars and two cents. And the final contract cost is a hundred ninety six thousand two hundred nine dollars and seventy six cents below the original. Contract price. Both of these are on for consideration for approval this evening. So at the end of the day, we came in under budget.
Any question on items A or B? All right, if there are, then we'll go into items C and D, utility replacement project payments number seventeen and eighteen, actually an E and nineteen with the final payment.
So application number seventeen in the amount of three hundred and two thousand four hundred eight dollars and twenty one cents. Includes a request for payment for work associated with Asbell plans. Paving work on East Broad Street and the release of retainage for work associated with West Broad Street, East Broad Street. And North Main Street Storm Sewer. Application number eighteen in the amount of one hundred thirty two thousand one hundred sixty two dollars and ninety cents. Includes a request for payment for Asbell plans, previously completed additional work outlined in the change order number two. And release of retainage for work associated with the North Main Street Sanitary Sewer. An application number nineteen, final payment in the amount of seventy three thousand seventeen dollars and eighty five cents. Includes a request for the release of retainage of work associated with the North Penn Water Authority Water Utility Replacement on West Broad Street. All three of these are on for consideration this evening and it will close out the project.
Any question? All right, if that will go to item F, the pedestrian crossing project bid results.
The big results for the pedestrian crossing project, which is the cross. The Mass Farm crossings on West Broad Street at Town Menton Avenue and South Main Street, um, right at the Liberty Bell Trail Crossing came in. Armor and Sons Electric was the lowest responsible bidder at two hundred seventy thousand two hundred fifty three dollars and seventy five cents. Uh, this is on for consideration as an action item to award them the contract. When we first started this prior to COVID, when we borrowed the money, I think we actually budgeted three hundred and seventy five thousand for this project. Um, as we kind of worked through the bridge project, some other things that we borrowed the money for that's still in a Harleysville account that we never. Really touched, it got down to about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so that's what we were budgeting. Um, it came in at well under budget at two seventy, two fifty, three seventy five. We will have to put a little bit more in the twenty twenty six budget to cover engineering and like projects, so. They have to be out there inspected. They'll do the grant reimbursement, so that will come, that will increase this project cost a little bit, but we have. Uh, a little over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the bank that we borrowed twenty nineteen that we haven't, you know, touched and we stayed for this project. So it won't, it will be an in and out and capital projects will show this year in the budget.
Have we used Armor and Sons before?
Yeah, they actually do all the work for um all the traffic lights in town.
Okay.
Yeah, they did not get the project for, we did the firehouse. They did not get that, but they've gotten almost, they do a ton of work in the township and the Steve goes in the borough all the time.
Well, I'm a speed dial. Kidding me?
I just don't remember using him for a project before. I know um.
No, I don't remember ever using them for a project, but um they do excellent work.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have the utmost confidence in their work.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if they got the Penn Dot project.
They did get the Penn Dot project for the Penn Dot fiber lines.
Yeah.
All the poles that got set down, um, down for four sixty three, um. They, they connected to our poles within Hatfield Borough, but you know, there was numerous poles they set, so they're more than capable of doing this kind of work.
Okay. And it's on for action, item nine is what you write, item F, yep. Okay. All right, any questions? If not, we'll go to item G, uh, the defined benefit plan for twenty twenty six minimum municipal obu, ob, I cannot speak the obligation.
This is something that we do every year for the defined benefit and the defined contribution, so our uh minimum municipal obligation for twenty twenty six. For the defined benefit plan will be sixty one thousand eight hundred fifty eight dollars. Last year it was sixty seven thousand sixty eight dollars, so a little, a decrease a little bit.
And what percentage are we at? In our coverage?
Uh, we're like. Last time I checked, we were almost like eighty seven, eighty eight percent like fully funded for that, yeah. But I can look it up for a budget finance.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Well above the minimum.
Oh, yes, yeah, I think some people struggle very much their pensions, yeah.
Yeah, the, the reason that we're doing this is the law is that we, you have to be aware of it, so that you have to do it at a public meeting. To indicate that you're aware of it. There are an awful lot of uh third class cities, smaller cities. And boroughs that are in trouble because they don't have enough money to pay their pensions. So you guys are in great shape compared to other places. That's good.
Yep.
It's probably, you know, careful fiscal management all along, but then doing what you have to do every year. Whereas other places sometimes that, ah, pensions, we don't have to worry about that yet. But then it comes up and it gets you, you know?
Yeah. Does it like officials aren't in office anymore, probably when that happens, right, so, yeah. Okay. Um, no questions, we'll go on to item H, the fine contribution plan for twenty twenty six minimum municipal obligation.
This is the minimum missa, minimum municipal obligation. Or the uh defined contribution plan for employees that are uh get four percent. Uh, last, it's twenty six thousand three hundred this year and twenty twenty five, it was thirty thousand five hundred. Uh, you might see the difference when we go to item I, which I will go to, which is the defined contribution plan in twenty twenty six. Minimum municipal obligation for the manager. So previously, we just used to do defined contribution. And uh defined benefit, defined contribution and manager and employees were in the same, um. We, we're paid at different rates, uh, manager seven and employees are four. But um for their paperwork, they asked if we would do it separately because it's easier for them to keep track of and we said, yeah, sure, we'll just take the money. But see, and we'll put it in here. So moving on to I. Uh, for twenty twenty six, for the defined or defined contribution plan for the manager. The mini, minimum municipal obligation is seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. All three of these are on for consideration as an action item. I would assume moving forward, they'll probably like to split it up into three. It's just easier for their paperwork.
Yeah. All right, any questions? If none, we'll go to IMJ Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirteen, closure of certain borough roads.
This resolution authorizes the closure of certain borough roads for the annual Fall Fest and car, car show. Scheduled for September thirteenth from three to six with the road closure from twelve P M to eight P M. And it's on for consideration as an action item.
All right, any questions? Kate, did you have a question?
Okay, it's not on the engine there, but it's on the engineer. I just print the wrong one for you.
Okay.
I didn't want you to miss it.
All right, if not, we'll go to item K, the MCC twenty twenty five dash, that's okay, twenty six rock salt bid results.
The Montgomery County Consortium of Communities um ha, hosts a rock salt bid every year. Hatfield Borough in the past has always hosted this. And we've always um. Kind of, we don't take the liability for it or anything like that, but we just kind of. Entertain the bids, authorize the bids, and then it kind of runs itself. The reason we do it is because our engineer is the engineer for the consortium. So it's just easier that we work together all the time. So Morton Salt this year was the lowest bidder at sixty thousand, or so, oh my gosh, sixty three dollars and sixty one cents. A delivered ton, the consortium would have a heart attack if it was sixty three thousand, so sixty three dollars and sixty one cents. Yeah. Per delivered ton and sixty three dollars per non-delivered ton, and that's an increase of uh one dollar and one cent. Uh, per delivered ton compared to last year's bid, which was awarded to Riverside Construction. So it's on for consideration as an action item this evening to award the bid. We are just the host municipality. Again, no liability. I just send out the contract agreements and they all, everybody orders on their own, it kind of runs itself. Very simple.
I'll need some help with the wording of that, so.
It, I think it's an interest in that.
Is it?
It'll be on.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll just read it from the screen. Okay, all right. All right, if there are no questions, we will get to the exciting portion, which are our action items for tonight. We'll start with. Uh, item A, motion to consider change order request number two for the utility replacement project to KCB Construction LLC. In the amount of sixty nine thousand fifty dollars and ninety cents. To increase the project cost to three point or three million two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and forty six dollars and thirty five cents. And I get a motion to consider that change order request.
Motion.
My most from councilman Burns, a second from councilman Weiss. Any questions, changes or amendments? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item B, motion to consider change order request number three for the utility replacement project to KCB Construction. LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and ninety one dollars and thirty three cents. To decrease the project cost to two million nine hundred and seventy nine thousand fifty five dollars and two cents.
It's a move. Second.
I hear most from councilman Fagan, a second from councilman Burns. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item C, motion to consider payment number seventeen for the utility replacement project to KCB Construction LLC. In the amount of three hundred and two thousand four hundred and eight dollars and twenty one cents.
We're moving. Second.
I have most from councilman Fagan, a second from councilman Burns. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item D, motion to consider payment request number eighteen for utility replacement project. To KCB Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirty two thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety cents. And I get a motion for payment request number eighteen.
Second.
My motion from councilwoman Weiss, a second from councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
I did not recognize that. Sorry, apparently I am mixing up the, the letters and calling it KCB and not KBC, so. I apologize. Madam Solicitor, do I need to make any other amendments because of my mispronunciation?
Now, the more, the um minutes should reflect it to the motion with the correct.
Thank you, Councilman.
On that, since we're not voting to accept the defined benefit plan contribution rates and all that. I do think the minute should be, oh, are we?
Yeah.
You know, we should actually take action somehow. Oh, I didn't see the back, okay. To acknowledge that we did get them and that should be in the minutes too, because that's a law that we have to count.
Okay, okay. All right. So we were on number eighteen, so let me rephrase it correctly this time. So can I have a motion to consider request payment number eighteen? For the utility replacement project to KBC Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirty two thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety cents. All right, so I have a motion from councilwoman Wise, a second from councilman Burns. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item E, motion to consider payment request number nineteen, the final payment for the utility replacement project to KBC Construction LLC. In the amount of seven hundred and seventy three thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty five cents.
Second.
I can motion councilwoman Weiss, a second from uh councilman Burns. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item F, motion to consider awarding the pedestrian crossing grant to Armor and Sons Electric. In the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and seventy five cents. I can most from councilman Burns, a second from councilwoman Weiss. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, motion passes. There are none, motion passes. Item G, motion to consider, and first we should acknowledge that we did receive, um, the obligation information for the benefits pension plan. And so now if I can have a motion to consider the defined benefits pension plan for twenty-twenty-six, the minimum municipal obligation in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Again, like to acknowledge that we did receive the defined contribution pension plan for twenty-twenty-six, the minimum municipal obligation for employees' contributions. So now can I get a motion to consider the defined contribution pension plan for twenty-twenty-six, minimum municipal obligation for employees receiving contributions in their annual income in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. And again, we'd like to recognize that we did receive the, we did receive the defined con- contribution pension plan for twenty-twenty-six, minimum municipal obligation for the borough manager. Um, so now can I get a motion to consider the defined contribution pension plan for twenty-twenty-six, minimum municipal obligation for the borough manager receiving contributions in their annual income in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars?
Motion.
I can motion from Councilman Burns, a second from Councilwoman Weiss. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item J, motion to consider Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen, closure of certain borough roads for the annual Fall Fest and Car Show events. I can motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item K, motion to consider awarding the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six MCC Rock Salt Bid to Morton Salt in the amount of sixty-three dollars and sixty-one cents uh, per delivered ton and sixty-three dollars and zero cents per non-delivered ton.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Weiss, second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Uh, item eleven, we're gonna talk through the bills. Are there any questions on the bills before we make a motion?
I just wanted to highlight that the one million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar bill list uh, seems extremely high for Hatville Borough, but if you break down the bill list, six hundred and seventeen thousand, that is we're paying back our debt that we borrowed from the project to the grant reimbursement. There's, uh, two Ample Ohio bills, both over two hundred thousand dollars each. Um, we do have the second water wastewater treatment at one forty-seven, KBC Construction is on there, those three payments. Um, we have ju- both June and July engineering payments on here. So when you really, when Diane and I broke it down, it might be really more like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of payments outside of the crazy ones that are making it look like a one point nine million dollars bill list.
And madam manager, you did warn us this was coming, so.
Which is very high. I even got a text about it today, so people are reading the packets.
All right, I like that, I like that. All right, if any questions? All right, if there are none, um, can I get a motion to approve payment of the bills?
Second.
A motion from Councilman Burns, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passes. Um, I believe we're having an executive session?
Yes, we have our real estate issues to discuss.
Okay, all right. Then I will put it on the floor for a motion to adjourn for executive session to discuss real estate litigation and personal personnel issues. I got a motion from Councilwoman Weiss, a second from Councilman Fagan. All in favor? Opposed? All right, PR adjourned. Thank you, everybody.